Good afternoon, everyone. Happy Monday. I call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. The date is Monday, November 5th, 2018. The time is 3:03. And we'll start with a roll call from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Pam Kirby.
Kim Hartman.
Barbara Perleberg. All board members are present. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll get started right now on our item Agenda 3A, School Consolidation Discussion and Possible Action to Approve a Process for School Closures, Consolidations, Boundary Changes. All right. Dr. Krieger, do you want to start us off?
Yes, I would like to do that. Thank you. President Perleberg, members of the Board, good afternoon. First of all, for information for the Board and community that this is a special session of the Board to receive information and give direction. But the information, depending on the outcome of tonight, you need to know that there will be a public meeting with opportunity for input and questions regarding this issue of consolidation. Again, depending on the outcome of this meeting and what the Board decides as to the makeup of that meeting and where it will be. But we will certainly be seeking public information in the case that the Board suggests that we do consolidate schools. So with that, I actually have a PowerPoint, but my PowerPoint pers— ah! Like magic, she appears. Did Ms. Marshall hand you the—
She's making them right now.
But you have the—
She has your—
(laughing)
Emailed it to the— My apologies, everybody. (pause) Dr. Krieger, you do have the handout, the other handout, the question—
Yes. So the question is to grow or to consolidate. So what I would like to present today is a plan for working with schools that have low enrollment. And the reason that I present this particular plan is because, as we've heard in several other presentations and in other Board meetings, issues of closing schools, consolidating schools, changing boundaries, all of those issues are extremely emotional issues and ones that sometimes catch schools by surprise. I would like to propose a process that gives schools a fair warning and that also gives them a chance to improve their situation so that they meet the criteria that we believe is important for efficient schools as well as effective schools. So with that, there are three areas that I will discuss today. One is school size. The second is how we, as a district, will work with schools to develop or enhance existing programs. And thirdly, the timeline that is necessary. And we are talking—I'm suggesting—that we give schools a timeline of two years, two years from now, so November of 2020, when they will be able to show that they have met expectations and will stay open. And by the way, because of the process that we followed, we'll have many issues that we are concerned with taken care of, that their program, their product, if you will, has been enhanced and that their enrollment is such that they are not pulling funds away from other schools in order to exist. So right now, first blush, we looked at what are the schools under 500 students? This is as of the 40th day count this school year. And there were 12 schools. Now, that's a larger project to deal with all 12 schools at one time and probably unnecessary. But within those 12 schools, there are four that are under the enrollment of 400 at this point. Anasazi, Echo Canyon, which is under 400, K8, Navajo, and Yavapai. So this list is all 12 schools. It shows their 40th day enrollment. It shows their letter grade, which I think is also significant because we are a school district and academic achievement is primary concern. It shows what the projected enrollment, based on our demographer, Mr. Braemer's report, for 10 years from now, and what the difference is, plus or minus, for those 12 schools. And I would like to suggest that you look at the four schools that I mentioned. Anasazi is an A, and the stability that is predicted is probably insignificant change. Echo Canyon is a B school, and is predicted—even though it has 390 students—it is still predicted to lose more in the next 10 years. Navajo is 335 and predicted to lose students in the next 10 years. And Yavapai is a C school, and no significant change, but it is the only school that is less than 300 students. So how do we make these schools more productive? So we would ask each one of the schools to find a program that they believe meets their community needs and will attract students to their school. Anasazi has already chosen and will be doing a presentation to you at Thursday night's study session where Anasazi is asking to go ahead and apply for a primary years program in the IB. The principal, Jen Waldrom, has attended a conference in LA on IB and came back extremely excited, and she has some pretty outstanding survey results of her staff and community for that program. And they believe that because of where they are situated, that their students feed into Mountainside, which has a middle-years program, and then into Desert Mountain High School, which has the IB program, that the primary years program is well-suited for them. Navajo, you know, we've heard a lot about the STEAM program, and we know that that program needs to be enhanced and grown. And we already have a start on that with scheduled professional development for that staff in science and technology, and we are looking forward to working with them. Echo Canyon and Yavapai are yet to be determined. The principals have been talked with, and they are both thinking about what programs it is, and Dr. Hagigot has been working with those principals to help identify programs. If those are programs that you would agree would go into this process, then we will work quickly with them to determine a program so that we can get them going right away. So what is a timeline? According to the law, anytime you close a school—and we are taking no chances—we want to say that, yes, we are talking about consolidation, of melding two or more schools together to produce an effective school with a new and improved program and product. But the law speaks to closing schools. And you change boundaries, you consolidate schools, you're in effect closing a school, most likely, or it certainly could be interpreted that way, and so we're trying to play it safe and be open to everybody. So it's a 20-day—minimum of 20-day process. This is according to statute. The Board must give 10 days' written notice to all stakeholders that it will hold a public meeting to discuss the proposed closure, and that's a discussion meeting. If you give us the direction to follow this process, then we will do the process, and then two years from now, we would be calling for a discussion meeting if, in fact, it shows that one or more of the schools need to be closed. After that first meeting, the Board must then give another 10 days prior to a vote to close the school. What I'm proposing is a two-year process of our help, all the resources that the district can give to help each and every one of those schools, except for, to be fair, extra staffing. To give a school staffing so that they can have classes of 10 would be an unfair drain on the total school budget, but the other resources that we have in terms of content area coaches, professional development, travel to conferences, or to see other schools that have the same program, all of those things that we can do, guidance and support will be done. In addition, we would ask the schools to present a type of performance contract that we are calling targeted growth. And we are suggesting—Cabinet and I are suggesting—two major areas for that targeted growth, and would be open to suggestions that you may have. One is to maintain or increase performance as measured by the state accountability system. Right now, that means AZ merit, and we would probably use the school letter grade to judge that. We don't know what's happening to AZ merit in the next couple of years. But there has to be, there will be, a state accountability system, and we would want the school to maintain their performance, or certainly, as we expect all of our schools to do, is to increase performance on that time. And then to increase enrollment. We are suggesting that in the first year, as they're getting started—we can't expect miracles, but we'd like to see a trend. Year one, we'd like to see an increase by 10% of their student body. By year two, 40th day of 2020, we would like to see the school reach the minimum of 400 that we are using this time. Now, we have—in these numbers—we have excluded pre-K and other special programs that are set up by learning community to keep things on a level field, so it's apples-to-apples K through 5, and in the case of Echo Canyon, K through 8. So my recommendation is—my request is—that the Board take action to agree that this two-year plan with support for the schools is the way you'd like to go, and that we pursue that process immediately. Now, to further the explanation—or at least certainly request—Board Member Hartman has asked to be able to present data that she has accumulated and analyzed regarding the attendance enrollment figures in our district. So I have included a couple of the slides that you presented to us, and so we have them here so that people can see what you're talking about. So if I may, Board Member Hartman?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Board Member Hartman. So first of all, thank you for allowing me the time, and just so the individuals in the audience know, it's a process because we cannot talk about certain things outside of a general meeting. So the only way to share personal research or anything you've done is to actually share it in a general meeting. So thank you for affording the time to do this. Also, I think it's terrific that we're calling it a growth plan or a—to grow or to consolidate is the question, because that really was the premise behind my additional research. So let's see here. Can you—do you mind, Dr. Saccos, can you go to—I saw there were three slides, three left—okay, let's stop at that one, and then—can I see the next one really quick? Because I just haven't seen that. And then the next one? Okay, great. If you can go to the first one, that'd be great. All right. So just to add a bit of context, what I did is I took the applied economics information that Mr. Rick Braemer had shared with us. Because what I thought was interesting about the applied economics information is that basically what it says—is it's what it told us five years ago when we got the last report—that we'll lose about a percent of students per year based on just general demographics of just kind of homes aging in place. However, as I looked at the information, there was an important point in here that wasn't really identified. When we were looking at the percentages, there's two things that were important. When we talked about capture rate, the capture rate really was what we captured within the boundary—the school boundaries versus outside of the school boundaries. So capture rate was really just focused on the students that we captured today, as opposed to the students that are uncaptured in our own neighborhood backyards and our own—our own neighborhoods and our own schools. So that was the first important point. The second point was related to a concept called enrollment to population, which is one and the same. And actually, ooh, I see Mr. Braemer right on cue. That was a special request that I had asked of Mr. Braemer to understand. So what is that population? So I'm going to walk you through where this data came from, because back to can we grow? I think the information will provide that, yes, we can, should we choose to, and here's the numbers and here's the opportunities that we have. So I'm going to just walk through the first two slides really quickly because they're more—they're kind of context. You can go back just that one. So what this represented was that E to P population or ratio. And by the way, when I'm done with this, Mr. Braemer, if there's anything that needs to be corrected, you're more than welcome to correct this. But Mr. Braemer and I did talk quite a bit about this. So what this color-coded document basically does is every one of those boxes—first of all, every flag represents a school, and every one of those boxes represents the amount of kids we attract in our schools, whether it goes to that neighborhood school or another SUSD school versus the population of kids in that same neighborhood. So this is based on—and the reason why we hadn't done it before is because this is based on census information, which is outside of what we know, right? This is what we don't know. And so what Mr. Braemer did was take the census information, and there's this thing called census tracts that I'll show you in a moment, which really identifies kids that are between those ages of K and 5, so that would be 5 and 8, or K and 8, which would be 5 and 13, and took the census information and kind of aged it forward. So of course, if somebody moved out or moved in—it doesn't—it's not absolute, but what you'll see is that the information is pretty significant, and plus or minus a few numbers probably doesn't matter a whole bunch. So these colors in here, you can see—if it's red, this is a neighborhood that's capturing 80% of its population in that census tract. If it's more towards the blue or the aqua side, it's 20 to 50%, green is 50 to 60%. So this just adds some context, okay? But there's numbers behind these colors. Okay, so now if you go to the next slide, I'm not going to spend a whole bunch of time on this, other than this is that same boundary with census tracts identified. And within those census tracts are specific age populations. So there is a spreadsheet that has a whole bunch of data, a lot of numbers, that says every one of those little red boxes has this many students between K5 or K8. So using that information—and one other thing I'll point out, it's not a perfect science because census tracts don't track exactly to a school boundary. But it does track to—you can literally see a flag and see where a school is and see approximately how many kids are in that area, okay? So if we can go to the next one, which is a little—can we make this a little bit bigger? And what I think I'm going to—yeah, if we can make it— (pause) (pause) Yeah. Oh, there we go. Okay. And I'm going to go from left to right. I'm going to go from left to right and just walk you through high level what this is, because a lot of it is actually already the information that Dr. Krieger and the team pulled together. I just put everything on one page, because I believe if you can put things on one page, people can understand it a little bit better, so. Okay, so going from left to right—let's see if I can see it. Let's focus on—maybe we'll use Anasazi as the example. So if you look at Desert Mountain—
(inaudible)
Is that—okay. Okay, that's great. That's okay. I dream about this, so (laugh) I've got to memorize. So just going—the first couple of columns on here are really just summarization of from left to right is 2018 information, and if you notice, I put pre-K and then K, 5 to 8, and then total. That simply was day 40 information that I got from Dr. Nance. I personally do think it's important to include pre-K because I think that's a future pipeline, and I think it's part of our—part of our academic rigor is to attract parents to a good pre-K program. So I personally would include pre-K in those numbers when we're targeting 400 or whatever that number is. I would include them because I think pre-K actually predicts the future of future enrollment, so that's why I have it included in here. Then in the second set of numbers that says 10-year projection, this was just simply applied economics 10-year production—production. And so if we look at the Anasazi, the number actually is—let's see. So Anasazi would show 25 kids in pre-K, 378 in—as of day 40, so 403 as of day 40. Keep reading across, 10-year projects 381. That would be a reduction of three students, a loss of 1%. So that's—if we do nothing different, that's probably what will happen. If you keep reading across, the next small set of columns just says out of district. So these are the number of kids that we capture out of district. So for Anasazi, we get another 98 kids. By the way, this set of columns and the second set of columns actually comes from Table 18 in our applied economics. And then if you go to the third set of boxes, basically what this summarizes is Table 18, which was in our Board package, which is what's enrollment by attendance area. So within the area, so the school boundary areas, and then outside. So it totals for Anasazi 457. At a high level, really what it should be is 403, which is the day 40 number, plus the 98 should equal the 457. The reason why it doesn't 100% of the time is because that enrollment attendance number wasn't based on day 40. So it changes a little bit, but it's within 100 on 10,168 students. So, you know, we are kind of talking a rounding error, although I wouldn't say that when it comes to a little body that's behind that, but what I am saying, it's directionally pretty accurate. The important piece here, though, if you keep going to the left, so the columns that are yellow, this is the additional information that I think is really important to empower the district and empower the site leadership and empower the parent community if they truly want a growth strategy. And what that represents is, first of all, the ratio column was applied economics at that point in time's best guess at capture rate. The second column, population, that is the census tract information. That's the new piece of information that I think is really important. And at the very bottom of it, what you see are 20,581 is the population, okay? So that's 20,581 kids roughly that are in our K5/K8 school district compared to the 10,168 that are attending. That means the difference between those two is roughly 10,400 students that we don't capture. They go to private school, they go to charter schools, they go somewhere, but they do not go to any SUSD Unified School. That's 10,000 kids that are out there that if we decided to market or to refine and improve and enhance our programs or some combination thereof, here's another 10,000 neighborhood kids that are available for our schools. And if you think about it, the reason why that's incredibly important is because every student, every single student that we attract is $5,000 in ADM, okay? So think about this. We attract 10 students. That's 50,000 ADM. Do we—would we require one teacher for 10 students? The answer is no, because what really happens is when you attract more students, you actually get more dollars that not only support teachers, right, but then support professional development and other supports for other academic rigor, because it's really about 25 students that fills a classroom. But it's only about 10 students, or 20 to 25. It's only 10 students that really require a teacher. So every other dollar that comes after that really goes to supporting the district at large. So there's definitely a value proposition and a successful financial model that would really say it's pretty—would make a whole lot of sense to go after a few more students. So that final column, what that represents is what—the estimated capture rate. What I can tell you right now, and when I spoke to Mr. Braemer at Applied Economics, is that 20,581 is pretty accurate. How it exactly splits out among the schools—although this is probably directionally pretty accurate—can be trued up, and it would cost a few more hours and a few more dollars of Mr. Braemer's time to get the exact numbers. But in general, it's a reallocation of numbers, not really a reduction of numbers. There may be a few that are outside the census tract that are outside our boundary, but when you're talking 20,000 students or 10,000 student delta, there's a big—there's a big opportunity there. So I just provide this to my fellow Board members because I have never heard us talk about what a growth strategy would look like. And I think it's really important that we empower our site leadership, our leaders, of which Dr. Krieger—it sounds like you're already talking to four—as well as the parent communities to know that if you want to grow your school, I can guarantee you the kids are there. It's a function of intention and probably hard work, and I know there's already a lot of hard work going on in our schools, but there's absolutely an opportunity. I don't see why any one of these schools couldn't be 400 students quite easily with a little—with a little bit of effort, both from either a marketing and/or maybe a product enhancement strategy. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or, Mr. Braemer, if I went off track and misrepresented anything, you're more than welcome to clarify that as well. Thanks.
Board Member Kirby.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman. So while we, as a Board, have not been able to discuss this with each other, we did receive these documents from Dr. Krieger a couple of days ago, and I spent quite a bit of time with what Board Member Hartman just presented and vetted it, and directionally, I very much agree with the work she's done. It's—it has high integrity in the way she approached it. The only part that I don't necessarily agree with her completely, and it's because this is where the soft part comes in, is the far-right column, which is the enrollment strategy to either grow or maintain. But I don't think that's really what she's putting forward here. It's more the concept of that the students are out there. There's 20,000 students out there in our district, of which we are only capturing half. capturing half. Um, and that I absolutely do agree with, we've been saying that for years. So I want to thank you for that, for the work you put behind this to take it down to a school-by-school level. Because in, without having done that exercise, to break it down by the school, I think it becomes very easy to say, oh, well, it's just the district's problem. Well, the, each school owns its pie, its piece of the pie in the whole district. And when the principals see this, I hope they do get a chance to see this and share with their communities, just how many students in the elementary age that are out there in their elementary boundary that they can go get. I think it will begin to drive some real conversations. So again, thank you for that.
Board Member Beckham.
I'd also like to thank Kim for, for doing this work. I do have a couple of questions. So one of the questions that I had was on that last column, enrollment strategy. How did you determine whether it was growth or maintain, and what do those two mean?
Yeah, I actually, that was for my own kind of narrative, and so I would just exclude it. But I'll tell you what my logic was at this time. Because if you notice, I put a projection, so what, or in desire. So what I, what my logic was, was based on two thousand eighteen numbers and two thousand twenty-eight numbers, if you're losing students, it'd be a growth strategy. If it was maintaining, if you were kinda flat, you would still have the same number of students ten years later, I may have called it a maintained strategy. So it was just, and then I put desire because at the bottom line, for me, this is about empowering others who can actually get an outcome, which is the site leadership, the parent community, and then the district. So you can have a desire to be bigger, smaller, same, but there are implications based on what your desire is. So that's why I left that blank. And my hope was that this was going to go straight to site leadership and parent communities to kind of go figure what they want their strategy to be. Okay?
Any questions? Board Member Kravitz?
Excuse me, I, I have a couple of comments, and they may seem like they're all over the map, but in, I've been out of town for a couple of days, so I'm a little bit behind, and I apologize. However, I feel like we have had some sort of a variation of this discussion throughout the years. I pulled up a presentation from November eighteenth of two thousand fourteen called Student Recruitment. In that presentation, it says here, overview of the data, fourth grade has the highest number of students moving to charter schools, twenty-one percent moved out of state, twenty-seven percent other public schools in Arizona, forty-three percent went to a charter school, three percent went to private, and four-point-five percent went to another S U S D school. And we talked about marketing of our schools, et cetera, et cetera. It's all very important. I, I guess I want to know what's gonna be different two years from now. When we're sitting here, we're gonna be having the same conversation. And that concerns me. Nobody really wants to close a school, and we all want your input, and we all want your help in marketing your schools. We can't do it alone. We have maybe four people in our marketing department, they cannot market. We can market our district, we can talk about our programs, and I think our programs are extremely important, and I think our academics are extremely important. And that is why I'm sitting here, because I think we need to bolster our port, our academics. I'm a little frustrated because Yavapai's sitting at two-sixty-two, and I'm just using it because this number's staring me straight in the face. We're talking about increasing enrollment by ten percent. Well, increasing enrollment by, uh, ten percent, so that would be another twenty-six, so we'll be looking at two-eighty-eight next year, and another ten percent after that, we're still not gonna be at four-hundred. So where is this influx coming from? And I don't mean to be picking on Yavapai, uh, there are other schools I could be talking about as well. Um, I get frustrated because I want to know, I, I, I want to attract more people. When I, when I look at the map that, that you showed us, I want to attract more people that aren't coming to, to our schools that live in within our district. And what is going to change to do that? You know, I, I don't know that the answer is just marketing, marketing, marketing. If we don't change what we're doing, there are people that come and look at our schools, you know, they've had, they, they, they get frustrated and, and they pull their students or they don't, they don't enroll to begin with. And, and we're sitting here, and I know we're going to be, you know, hiring a new superintendent, and, and that is the task at hand, is what are we doing to improve academics and improve our programs? So I'm a little frustrated right now because that to me is the million-dollar question. What are we going to differently, do differently that we, that we haven't been doing before? Somebody answer that, thank you.
I would like to take a stab at that, if I may.
Please, Dr. Krieger.
That's why I, and I've been, obviously been in this business a long time and been through these discussions, both in this district and in neighboring districts. And it's always a good question, what is going to make a difference? And in, in most cases in the past, we just, uh, the board and cabinet come together on a recommendation, and they'd close the school, and they'd, they'd go through all of the issues with, with a community that was disenchanted, uh, didn't know that this was coming down the pike, wasn't given a chance to improve their programs, to improve their product. Uh, and so as a result, uh, instead of going to the new school that they were selected to go, they went elsewhere and became part of that negative balance of, of the capture rate. So there, there's no, um, no reason not to tell you, yes, this, uh, this particular model comes from a neighboring district where it was successful. They had, uh, five or six years ago, um, they consolidated two schools, they'd given them, they, four schools were named, um, two schools did nothing. One school maintained and was left and was kept open, actually they were consolidated into that school. And a fourth school, uh, at the end had to have more classrooms built on their campus because of a program that was added there that they didn't have, that they would not have added had there not been this warning, this push to go ahead. This last, this last spring, uh, they consolidated two more, uh, sets of schools. Again, after the process, and their, and parents understood why, they were welcome to the new schools. So what, what is different? I think the, the difference is, number one, you're involving the community into the process. It's not just an administrative decision, it's not just a board decision. Number two, I don't believe in the past, at least in my experience in this district, when we closed Kachina, Kaibab, Lolomah, Tonto, um, and so forth, that I don't believe that, that the idea of looking at your program and what fits with your community, as Anasazi and Navajo have done, and said, this, these are programs that we believe that our parents and our community will rally around and come to. So that the conversation, marketing, a marketing strategy at the district level is fine, but we all know that the talk in the grocery lines is most important. Neighbors talking to neighbors, what, I just moved in here, what's, what's the best school? Well, our neighborhood school has this program or has that program. And the community has been involved in the decision to develop that program and to sustain it. So I think what's different is the programming effort and the community involvement.
Board Member Kirby.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to try to answer that too, Board Member Kravitz. Um, this conversation started about closing schools, I believe approximately two thousand and eight, ten years ago. There's been, I think we'll be going on our seventh or eighth board next year that will be having this conversation. What's different is that in that timeframe, the boards have tried to solve the problem. And it's gone from, we need more marketing, to we need more administration, to we need more programs or more rigor. But what we, then I, I believe the mistake we've made is we've never identified the schools that need to be addressed very publicly, turned around and handed it to the superintendent and said, you go figure it out, you go fix this. We tried to fix it up here, and I don't know that that was the best approach. So, you know, I, I have questions about the process that Dr. Krieger has, um, put forward, but at a very top level, I do agree, it's a, it's a new process that we haven't tried before. And I guess that's what's different. It is something that we haven't done before to try to solve this problem that has been out there for at least a decade. And so I'm willing to give it a shot.
Board Member Hartman.
And I'll, I'll add one more example that really underscores what, um, Dr. Krieger and now Board Member Kirby mentioned. It does come down to intention, and it comes down to empowering people with not only data, but with, um, it's a defined outcome. And I know it works based on my thirty years of management consulting, but I can also tell you it works because one of the reasons I got on the school board was because I and one other parent in two thousand and ten decided to go after school tax credit. And the way we went about it is we went to all thirty schools at the time and empowered the PTOs and the administration and the parent community to go out and ask for more school tax credit. This was two thousand and ten in a downturn, a financial economic downturn. In two years, we raised another half a million dollars. We went from two-point-five million to three million. We had been stagnant at two-point-five, actually, actually declining for the years preceding it. The difference was, the way we went after it and increased it by that twenty percent, I mean, pretty significant dollars, was we went to each community and said, here's the information, here's the data, here's the tax credits that are out there for you to go get them. Site councils, you decide, you make the decisions on how to use the funds, so you need to go back to your community and tell them how to create, how to get the funds so we can do more of this programming. And every single school had a different programming strategy. So all ten schools, particularly in the K-five, even the high school, we went to all thirty, what they did is they created a customized plan on how to go after school tax credits. Well, it's now at three-point-five million because we embedded it in a place that it made sense for it to be embedded it. We made it responsible for the people who are gonna spend the money to go attract the money. And it's very empowering. And so I know it works in this community because I saw a school tax credit work in just two years. So it's the same idea, it's the same concept, only we're talking about go after neighborhood kids and go, go communicate. And there's things that the district can do to support it so that it's a local solution, right? What is your school, what do your parents want? Okay, it's a district, then we need to support it, and there's some things we can support, but you really are going after your community. And that intention and that decentralization of decision-making really, really empowers people to do some pretty incredible things that I'm certain they can do it. It's demonstrated by our Navajo parents recently and now our Anasazi parents.
Board Member Beckham.
I want to thank Sandy for having the courage to say what you did say. No, it did, it took courage, and it needed to be said because I think you're, you're right, and then we were able to have the conversation and get some history behind it. A couple of things that I'm gonna just talk about what I heard today, because I want to reiterate, this is an initial meeting. And what I think I've heard is just a real preliminary plan put in place, unless it's felt that, no, this is kind of the foundation and, um, this'll get it done. Because I think that there can be a lot more to develop it. So what I had, what I heard from Dr. Krieger is that the process is, is one, to develop a plan, enhance programming at these schools. Two, the district provides all resources. You had a caveat with that, no extra staffing as an example to reduce class size. So my first question, and then number three, you set criteria, and you did the targeted growth with two measurements for outcomes. I'm gonna go back to number two, which I think needs to be developed a little bit more. You say provides all resources, but when you say no extra staffing with an example to reduce class size, it gave the impression that there's no additional funding that could be used at these schools. And so I want to talk a little bit about funding because in number one, developing a plan, you talk about Anasazi, who is looking at an IB elementary program, which we know costs additional funds. So they're gonna be coming forward asking for additional funds, I don't know how much that is. Therefore, if, then will all schools get that approximate amount? So I'd like to not, the discussion is not to have that right today, but to develop it more on, when you talk about resources, what exactly do you mean? Which goes to my second point, which is what I think has happened possibly in the past. When you say it has been, um, guided by the board, it was, we need more marketing. Well, then that marketing was never developed fully. So what I would like the next conversation to be is to have more development under these criteria, and that would be adding to them, deleting them, understanding the thought process behind them, uh, finding out who in the district, the individuals in what departments would be supporting these schools so that we also see that the administration is accountable for supporting those schools. And then I do believe on that criteria, I, I piggyback what Board Member Kravitz had said, if you look at just Yavapai and you talk about a ten percent increase, you're looking at twenty-six students. So maybe we really need to, um, look at these, um, measurements and possibly also, um, instead of just taking the state accountability, because if you're taking the state accountability, you're really, it's kind of a little bit watered down, I think, sometimes if you're just looking at Arizona merits, because they say maintaining the state average, but we're typically above the state average. So I would probably maybe want to use what we actually achieve and show growth there. So those are just a couple of ideas thrown out there, but I think this is a beginning of a good plan.
If I may, just on the, on the resources part, so I did say no extra staffing, but I also mentioned several things that do cost money. Professional development, both internal and, and external, uh, presenters, travel to places that are, that where you see the models and, and hear from people who have done it before. And of course, uh, using our coaches, using our, um, people at the, in the cabinet level, assistant superintendents is, that's a, there's a cost indirectly tied to that. So, um, we actually have, we've just, uh, recently received the allocation for results-based funding in the state. And, uh, the guidelines by the state for that is, uh, one of the ways that it can be used is to build similar models to those schools that had the results that warranted a payment in other schools. So there, there is funding outside of the M and O budget even that allows for building programs at schools so that they could also have the same kinds of results as those schools who received the funding from the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. So th, there are ways to, to provide resources at the schools that does not take away from the M and O budget that goes to all the rest of the schools. Give all the same money to the same schools. I believe it needs to be on a needs basis, and I'm, I'm a great advocate of schools doing a type of grant application to the district, uh, in a, maybe a less formal way than, than some grants, but still in a way to say, here's a project that, that my staff and my community have come together and believe would make a better product at our school. And it may be different and cost a different amount. Yes, the PYP costs a certain amount, and we'll lay that out on, on Thursday. Yes, the PYP costs a certain amount, and we'll lay that out on Thursday, but it's not unlike what we are doing with STEAM at Navajo. Different cost, but the same process of building the expertise in the classroom with the teachers on how to present an integrated STEM with arts into their regular program. So, there are resources that will be provided. My only caveat was staffing for class size.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. I had a similar funding question, which I hadn't gotten to yet, but I'll piggyback. Dr. Creek Guard, do you have these on the overhead?
I do. Well, on the overhead, no. No, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, what these are for the public, the schools that were on the list, in addition to Tavon, Cherokee, and Hopi, the staff has created a cost per student for each one of those schools, and you can get those as public documents later. But it's the common costs across all schools, so it doesn't get into the layer of teachers or support staff that work with students. It's a very high-level cost per student. And my question is, if you look at Tavon, for example, the cost per student is approximately $1,220 per student. And if you look at Yavapai, and not to pick on Yavapai all night long, but they are the lowest enrolled school, the cost per student is almost twice that, at $23.56. So, my question is, in that very extreme example, and then there's a whole bunch in between, the rest of the schools that are on the list pretty much average about 50% more per student than our appropriately enrolled schools. But Yavapai is the extreme for illustrative purposes. So, if we're already spending 2X per student at a school, because it's a function of enrollment, the cost, the expenses are all basically the same. It's completely a function of enrollment. Then how do we justify adding additional resources to that school? And if you are a Tavon in this example, how is that equitable?
Did you want to respond, or shall we continue with some questions?
Sure. No, I'd be happy to respond.
Okay.
It's similar frankly to how Title I works. So, the schools with the greatest need receive the greatest amount of money, by per capita basis. So, as Wise Person once said, I think on this dais, equality isn't always equitable. And so, we're looking at equity. To me, that means opportunity for all students to be able to reach their potential. And the needs of that individual student or of the student body at that school will differ from place to place. And so, you provide the appropriate amount of resources so that all students have the same opportunity.
Board Member Kravitz?
Sorry. Okay. I know I sound like a broken record, but how, my concern is reaching the students in our district who aren't going to school, to our schools, and not just filling our schools with students from outside of our district just so we can get to the magic number of 400 or five, you know, 500, whatever the magic number is. And that's my concern. Yes, I'm not against open enrollment, so please, if you're out there, don't interpret it as, "Oh, she's against open enrollment." But how much open enrollment do we want in our schools? And again, I want to focus on the people that aren't sending their kids to our schools now that we should be capturing.
I'm going to put a finer point on that because you said it in another board meeting. I thought you said it very well, and it resonated with some, it's always been on my question is, these last few years, as we've had to question, what do we rebuild and when? It's not so much, you know, how much open enrollment do we want, but our question has to be, should our Scottsdale taxpayers build schools or pay to build schools for out-of-district students alone, basically? That's a question we have to answer. So, I just wanted to put a finer point on that. But, or Member Hartman?
All right. So, just in response to Board Member Kravitz, so, the data that I presented is, are the kids in our district in there? So, there's, yeah, well, exactly. There's 20,000 kids, 10,000 of which, let's, and this is additional data that we can look at in detail later, but just assume 10% always go to private schools, 10% always go to charter. So, really, 80% capture rate is really 100% capture rate, if you will, because there's parents who are going to do whatever they're going to do. Right. So, just using that logic right there, there's 8,000 kids that absolutely are available. So, that's really the point. I mean, that's what this whole exercise was, to show that we don't have to go, although by state statute, we're open enrollment, but we don't have to go any further than our own backyard to get a few hundred extra kids across a few schools. And hopefully, it's much more, but that's a minimum. The other thing I just want to mention on this cost analysis, because once again, I am a data person, but data can be a little misleading too, so I think there's some deeper analysis that needs to be done. One consideration that I think, to your point on the Title I, that's fed, those are federal dollars. Those dollars go directly to the kids. I don't know the number offhand. I used to know it at one point, but it's well over, I don't know, 1,000, 1,500? I don't know. It's a pretty significant number on what our, we have about 35% Title I kids. So, what, we could figure that number out, but call it 800. I mean, there's something very specific, and you could actually say, "Okay, how many Title I times this dollar amount?" That does, so, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison until you true it up and understand that if you have 80% Title I kids and each one of those kids tracks another $800 per kid in federal funds, well, 1,200 and 2,000 are actually apples-to-apples because the other 800, using that number, actually comes from federal funds because it's Title I. So, I think that's really important. On the next round of analysis, we need to understand that in this number so that it's truly an apples-to-apples comparison. The other piece that I think is important is, how many special needs kids do we have? And I really got a good, acute conversation update when I was talking to Principal Plotzoff in Navajo, because you need to understand how many Title I kids because, excuse me, how many special needs kids there are. Because one kid, even though we're getting $5,000 on a state funding, may require $15,000 or $20,000 in really full services, and that goes into the cost. Are special needs and costs in here at all?
No, no, they aren't, but they are also weighted differently from the state based on their category and their needs.
I'm sorry.
They're weighted, the, each student based on their special education category is weighted differently, and there's a heavier weight the state has recognized special. Now, historically, the federal government, which supplies the money for special ed through the state, just as it does with Title I, only pays about a third of our actual costs in special education.
Right. Which, once again, I mean, it's federal, state mandate, so kind of here, no, there. We got, we have to come up with it. So, just to clarify though, in these costs, are there special needs considerations or in the student population at all?
Not on these sheets, no.
Not on these sheets, so that...
So, these are, as was stated, these are the, these are the common across all schools to keep these, these sheets at least on a common basis. Principal, dean, clerical staff, instructional age nurse, crossing guards, et cetera, that all schools have.
So, the one thing that would be embedded in here is that if it's a higher special needs school, if there's contained classes, you may only have 10 kids in a class, so that kind of does drive a little bit. So, you might want to, you might want to kind of understand it. It is pretty significant. I know and I... Well, just when we're talking cost, I just would want to ensure that we're looking apples-to-apples.
These are also, this is MNO costs. So, did not consider those other areas.
Okay. Okay. I'm just getting this just five minutes ago, so I'm just kind of seeing it right now. Okay. All right. All right. Well, the piece on the federal, on Title I. Well, it's important to understand when you're talking about costs, though, that those are components of it. Thanks.
Board Member Kirby?
Okay, thank you. And I want to again try to respond to Board Member Kravitz and Board Member Perleberg's question before Board Member Hartman with respect to out-of-district open enrollment. I think we, as electeds, have a duty to represent the constituency base that elected us. And I think we have, over the years, have all done that. We've had board members who are highly supportive of recruit whatever kid you can get from wherever and put them in our seats. And then we've had board members like yourself who have wanted to focus first on the kids in our own backyard, our own taxpayers' children. To Board Member Perleberg's question of, "Do we want to continue to build schools for students that are not Scottsdale Boundary Schools?", we can have our opinions. They haven't been worth much over the years, to be honest. And I guess at the end of the day, that's up to each individual taxpayer. And it doesn't stop just with the schools, building the schools. It starts with the MNO on the ballot next year. It starts with MNO. And that's when, over time, Scottsdale taxpayers will make a decision if they want to continue funding a 15% increase for a school district who is shrinking but continuing to keep all the schools open. And I can just tell you, we've tried to make that argument over the decades, and we're still here, having the same conversation, and so it may just have to come down to the taxpayers. But again, this is a new process. It's a new approach at the same problem. I'm, I, for, honestly, a little exasperated, but I am willing to give this a shot. Again, I still have some questions. I don't think that we should get down into the minutia on what we're expecting from each of these plans. Because I think if we get down in the minutia, what that then does is it enables staff to kind of hide behind that and say, "Oh, well, that wasn't, you know, the board's forcing us to do this," or "The board thinks this." I think we need to really put this all on the plate of staff and say, "Go do this." And yes, we need to have some very high-level enrollment targets, academic targets. I agree with what Dr. Creek Guard presented, but beyond that, our duty stops with, except the budget. Because if he comes to us with funding for some of these programs, that will be in the budget, and we have a duty to approve the budget in June. He's answered the equity question, which was the big one that I had on my plate. You know, I'm, honestly, I, I think this, I believe this is a good approach. I wholeheartedly support it. I want to spend some time on the targets that he's presented, Dr. Creek Guard has presented, vet those out just a little bit. But we don't have, honestly, time to spend 60 days talking about this, or 90 days, or 120 days. We've been talking about it for 12 years.
Board Member Beckham?
So that I can respond, I'm not talking about getting into the minutia. What I have seen over the last 12 years is that we always have these great plans, and then nothing happens with them. So, I'm not trying to force anything or draw this out. I have a, I feel, a sense of urgency that I don't see by the administration. And so, therefore, I would like to see that sense of urgency, and in the sense, you go do the job, but you have to be able to communicate progress and what's happening. Because if there is no communication or any additional information, when you do come to give, to request funds for the budget, and I don't have any information between this meeting and come April, when you're asking for funds, I, once again, am going to get, you know, frustrated and say, "It's the same old thing. I can't give you the funds for that." So, I would, I just want to see the communication that is to the actual schools, the site, the site leaders, and just be able to be getting that so that you know that progress is being made. Not that I want to have any input in it. I don't think that is our role. I think we have been forced into that role because we don't have that communication on the administration side.
Board Member Hartman?
All right. Thank you. So, before we talk to the criteria, which I think is a worthy conversation, the only thing I just want to offer for consideration, Dr. Creek Guard, is you talked a little bit about kind of a grant, I think you called a grant request process or something like that. What I think would make sense is, and you can think it through and pluses and minuses, but I think there's four things that we want from every school when it comes to a holistic strategy. One is the academic performance, where it is now, where it wants to be. Choose how you want to measure it, but AZI merit is probably as good as any. It's available. Enrollment targets, where are you today? Where do you want to be two years from now? Maybe it's two years and five years because not all of these things happen overnight. We know an IB program takes probably two years to get to any place of actual offering. Number three, what is the product enhancement plan? So, what does that look like? That will feed into the academic, but that's going to look and feel different for everyone, but it's the same framework. And then number four, what's the marketing plan? How do you, and maybe say, marketing communication, how are you going to communicate these plans? Because those four things combined together really become a strategy. And then I would identify it as now, and if you say, "Two years from now is the target, but one year, two years," I'd probably go up to three years, four years, because it will take, not every plan is going to be similar. And then I'd also encourage that we, instead of layering something on top of our site leadership that feels in addition to, I don't see why this wouldn't be part of the annual continuous improvement plans. I mean, we may want it sooner than that, but the point is, we're talking the same thing, right? It's just being more specific and more intentional behind each of these kind of components of what a real holistic plan looks like.
Right. Right. I agree. Thank you for that. The first step is, once the school and community chooses its program and decides on that, is then to make a presentation to the board. "Here is our plan. These four criteria are great, and any others that any of you would like to add, let us consider those." But, so you know what's going on. And then periodic reports to the board, whatever that is, six-month, annual, we can decide that. But one thing that I know has to happen is, the administration has to make periodic reports to the community as well. "Here's where you are. We're the ones who have the data. So, here's where you were when you started. Here's where you are now. Is that where you want to be? Is that in line with where you want to be at the end? Or are you lagging behind? Or are you ahead of schedule?" So, those community meetings are also important in the process so that at the end of two years, they know where they're going and what's going to happen. But it, so, all of those things, those are steps to be put in place, but I agree with Board Member Beckham, communication is key. I'm sorry that you've had superintendents who give you plans and then don't follow through, but I've said before, you should have hired me earlier, so.
I, I'm going to go ahead and jump in. I haven't had an opportunity yet, and so, but I know. Board Member Kravitz, Board Member Kirby, you're next. I just, I kind of have to jump in on some of the things that were said earlier. I'm going to forget. Board Member Hartman? Board Member Hartman, I love your optimism, and I am happy you're here to run that optimistic train. I, I probably would place myself at the caboose of that optimism train. I'm, I hear Board Member Kirby and of course Board Member Kravitz, this is not a new conversation, this is not a rushed conversation, this is not one that was suddenly pulled out of thin air by these five women here. It is over 10 years of different administrations and different board members trying to solve a problem that has been in front of us for a very long time. It's been so long, honestly, I had lost all hope that we would ever have an honest, real conversation about our enrollment decline, our excess capacity, and the cost our students and classrooms pay for that reality. Despite what is maybe written in the press or posted online, no one wants to close schools, no one wants to consolidate, I don't want to do it. I just know that if we don't do it, if we don't talk about and answer the question of our sustainability and health in this district, I don't know what the future looks like. And this governing board is supposed to be driving our district to the future. So I just don't know how that works if we don't do this. So I'm sitting here today, and maybe we can pull back up the slide, someone, the schools under 500 list. I mean, we all know, we didn't get here just in the past year. 12 schools under 500, and I've heard various things over the past few years.
The list, 500.
The list of 500, schools under 500.
There you go.
Because, because I'm agreeing with Board Member Kirby, it is time, we have to place this problem in the laps of our community, because that's about the only thing different that hasn't been tried yet. I agree. So as we, as that list sinks in to all of our collective mindset, I, I'm going to have to be the one to challenge the fact of, you know, a 400-student bar. I mean, let's be honest, based on what I understand as a board member and what's been told to me, is, that's pretty low bar. And that's a bar that actually, maybe Mr. Gad could help me with this conversation, I'm sure he knows a lot more than I do, but that bar actually sets us at a disadvantage for staffing, sets us at a disadvantage for specials, sets us as a disadvantage for differentiation, things I have come to believe are community values. So I think, before I continue, maybe I'll let Mr. Gad speak to that point.
400 is at the lower.
Yeah.
How about that, better?
There you go.
400 is at the lower end of the spectrum, but it is within reason in terms of how this state funds public schools. And I think the 400 threshold would give this district and any other district, for that matter, a reasonable position to be in financially. Below that threshold, I think then there's really issues concerning fixed cost. So I, I really, you asked me a question, I think, I think 400 is okay. I would not say that same thing under 400.
Okay, I very much appreciate that answer, because yeah, we've, we've bounced between those numbers back and forth. I think what I'll challenge is, I mean, I too am supportive of what you're saying, Dr. Creekguard, very much so. I would maybe grin a little bit at the idea of two-years warning, because it's really been 10-years warning. So here we are, that's fine, but I, I would, I guess, challenge us, as we look at the other schools that are well under 400, are we truly, if we just start this conversation tonight and keep it as, okay, everybody, you've seen the reality, get to work, are we setting those schools up for success? When we say we need to invest time and resources and energy into making them successful? And again, now, I'm not, not trying to call out YAVAPI, but looking at those, you know, three schools towards the bottom, especially YAVAPI, are we, are we really using our resources wisely? Are we setting YAVAPI up for success? When they're at that level, we know staffing is an issue at that level, we know special and all those things, and differentiation is such a challenge. Are we saying, YAVAPI, go do the impossible, because we don't really want to make a difficult decision right now? So that's, that would be one of the questions that I would ask tonight, moving forward with this plan. My other question is, and I think this is one point I kind of wanted to disagree a little bit with, with Board Member Beckham. I think two years, this past two years, we've had an administration and a board that has tried to tackle these issues in various ways, and, and yes, we were attacked for pushing too hard and pushing too fast. We had administration that was finally stepping up to plate and saying, there's problems, there's issues, look at these numbers, look at this data, and we all got pummeled for it. So I wouldn't say to this administration or certain members who have come and gone over the last years that, you know, you weren't acknowledging it. I think we all paid a price for starting to acknowledge it for the first time. Did we do it all perfectly? Of course not, no one would ever say that. But I would like to say that if our community, if moving forward with this plan, if we don't all turn away from the methods that were used in the past to try and have these conversations, rumor mongering on Facebook, fear mongering, allegations, all of, if we don't turn away from that and actually start having real conversations at our sites, we're not fixing this. This is not getting fixed on Facebook. So I would say, it is this administration, and it is our principals and our site councils and our site leadership that is going to get us out of this. And I could not be prouder that for the last two years, this board has been building up site leadership and our principals as academic leaders, because otherwise, this would be all hopeless, in my mind. So I'll throw that out there, and then I'll throw one last problem, is, my concern is, I love the idea of putting it in our hands of our schools. 10 years ago, some schools did take on that challenge. But we also kind of paid a little price for a lack of an overall strategy when those schools did that, because we always know in elementary school, you make a decision here, it affects your middle school and your high school. So that's where I'm going to have to challenge administration and say, you're going to have to guide our schools to make sure it is truly a viable plan, K through 12. Got it all out, thank you. Board Member Kirby.
Okay, thank you. The only, the other big point I'd like to include is, I, I don't know that it behooves us three or four years from now to only focus on four schools. There, what are there, 12, did you say, on this list? Maybe the four are the tier-one, code red, but the other eight become tier-two? And instead of being on a two-year plan, maybe they're on a four-year plan or a three-year plan. I just don't want to have these kinds of numbers, where I appreciate Mr. Gad saying that this is the floor. There are many schools up there hovering around the floor. And I don't want them to walk away, those communities, and say, oh, we survived another board, we survived another superintendent, and come talk to me in three years. We'll have the same conversation. And at that point, now they're down at 390 and 380. So I'd like to keep them in play, if you will, Dr. Creekguard, with similar metrics, longer timeframe, because it's not as urgent, if that makes any sense.
Absolutely, and that's one of the lessons, the, the, good news is that, that we are recommending this plan after our neighboring district has been through six or seven years with the plan, and so we've learned some things from them, things they didn't do, things they did do well. One of the things they did well was they came back, they dealt with four schools in the first round, and then in tier-two, they had four more schools, and again, this bring, they closed, because the, the schools that were consolidated the first time took off, they had their program, they had their combined numbers, they took off, and others fell by the wayside. All four schools that were consolidated in both tier-one and tier-two, total of four schools, were between 325 and 375 students. So that means that the, in tier-two, the schools, while tier-one was being looked at, were okay, but they, then they lost enrollment in the meantime. So it is something to continually keep an eye on, year by year. We actually receive weekly student enrollment counts, and we're watching those all the time. So that, if I could, while I have the floor, overall strategy is important. And I'll tell you what my overall strategy has been since May 15th. I've looked at the, at the high schools, at the five high schools that lead the learning communities. And we have a great example with Coronado, the Coronado Success Initiative. It's so important for those students at Coronado to graduate with marketable skills and to lead a more productive life than someone who drops out of high school generally does. So that was important. So we, we also then this year built in the pipeline to say, we need to prepare students for a college-going rigorous program at Coronado. That's the world, we have the Science and Math Academy. We have added self-contained gifted classes at Kiva, so that there'd be a pipeline for that. We, we also are putting our effort into the STEAM at Navajo is another pipeline. At Desert Mountain, the PYP program fits into that. At Chaparral, the AP program has been solid, and, and we need to continue to work with, and there's still work to be done with the feeder system there in terms of what I believe the potential is at that school. So my overall strategy has been, since I came in, is to look at the end result. What is the logical place for these students to end up? And what is a program that best suits, that the community has already chosen long before me? And how can we enhance the pipeline for each one of those so that the students have a more meaningful K through 12 experience that makes, and, and attracts more people from the neighborhood as well, because they know what it is and where they're going?
Can I jump on your earlier comments about kind of tier-one, tier-two? I appreciate that, and I also appreciate the acknowledgement, that this sense of urgency is, it's very real. My, my one issue, though, is having schools in tier-two, if they're up for a rebuild, in, in my mind, that kind of puts them in tier-one a little bit. I mean, it's, I'm just going to put that out there as that reality. If you're not looking at rebuild, then it's not as urgent, but looking at rebuild and hovering around that basement, that bottom floor, or basement floor is, kind of, might, might move you up in tier-one, I guess, is my issue, but if you had any additional thoughts on that, or?
Well, I do have, we've talked a lot about this at cabinet level, is, obviously, it's a very important issue to the district as a whole. So YAVAPI and the Coronado learning community isn't, is a, always a very tough decision, because I know that YAVAPI is a representative of a culture in South Scottsdale that I think is important and that we maintain. So if, if it were to result that YAVAPI were to be consolidated, my recommendation would be that, that we, and Mrs. Marshall, if I say more than I'm supposed to, please stop me. My recommendation would be that we consolidate it with HOOCOM to maintain the learning community, and as soon as Navajo rebuilt, that rebuilt, the restoration is completed, which is a shorter timeline than Cherokee, and we can do, we know we can do two projects at once. I would suggest that we bring back to the board to vote to rebuild HOOCOM, which has been at the top of the list two times that we've gone through the matrices. And so rebuild HOOCOM, and so that the YAVAPI and HOOCOM would be consolidated. Now that won't be for another year, year and a half, possibly, but in the meantime, I might also recommend that we get started earlier on HOOCOM, and, and when we're, when we're ready to do that, we could temporarily move the HOOCOM students to YAVAPI temporarily, and then when the new building is built, move the, all of the students back to a brand-new building, or at least a completely remodeled building, whatever the decision is on that. But I think that would be an option that would keep the students feeding into Tonalea, the middle school part, and Coronado High School. And, and with the new buildings and the school that has been noticed as needing, needing help in two different times that we've gone through that exercise.
All right, thank you very much for opening that can of worms. Board Member Hartman.
Thank you, just one question and one comment. So the question is maybe for Mr. Gad. Is there a reason why these numbers we don't include pre-K, Title I, and Panda?
Well, number one, we receive no state funding directly for any of those students.
Use your outside voice.
How about now?
And maybe talk about them individually, because some of them, there's community schools, so parents pay for, and Title I, how that all works.
Generally, preschools in our district are supported by tuition from parents. They are, they are in no way acknowledged other than handicap preschool, which does count, but regular ed preschool does not count for any state funding whatsoever. It's not included in our ADM count, not included in our M and O budget. So because it did not have a funding base from the state, and because sometimes it has an influence of affluency within the attendance area as to the size of those preschools, we just chose not to include them because we thought that they might distort what we tried to create as equity. The second one is Title I, those students count in our regular ADM. Those are included, because the Title I is a pull-out type program. So they're all counted as, as a general ed student for, that's right, not preschool, but for, but for regular grade-level students. They are counted as a regular ADM, so from grades K through eight, they would count as a regular ed student. And the other program you mentioned was?
Pre-K, is there a pre-K, Title I, and Panda?
Yeah, the pre-K, Title I is funded by Title I. Again, there's no count recognized for ADM, okay, unless it's a handicap student, no preschool counts for purposes of, of daily membership for state funding, okay? So again, we, we just decided that it was a lot cleaner to deal with the data without including students that either didn't count at all or were, were distorted somewhat by the economic base from which they came.
I mean, maybe this isn't the time to fully talk about it, but I do think we should kind of talk about it, because, you know, use YAVAPI as an example. Without it, it's 268, with it, it's 333. It actually is one of the higher numbers in there, and that's excluding the numbers that are temporarily there from Navajo. So I don't know, for me, pre-K seems like it's part of the strategic plan, it builds academic rigor. It, I don't know, it's the pipeline for the future, you attract parents earlier, they tend to stay. So I don't know, I think being intentional around our pre-K actually serves us well in a lot of different ways.
I, I agree that it's important to acknowledge those numbers and understand that that is a great source of potential enrollees, K through 12. But for this discussion only, the reason YAVAPI has so many preschool students is because they have room. It's a Title I program, and it's put at YAVAPI because they have room. There isn't room at Tonalea to have them, for example. So it's unfair for just this discussion to include a group of students who are there because the school has room, not necessarily because they're from that attendance area. Some are, yes, but not, but not all of them are. Same way, right now, Navajo doesn't have any, because when they had to move to Oak, they lost their, so those kind of circumstances to us meant that, to be fair, everybody has kindergarten. kindergarten through fifth grade, that's what we're going to compare. But certainly in no way means that we don't acknowledge the importance of those classes.
Board Member Beckham.
I'm kind of going back to what you had said, President Pearlberg. Will, I'd like to know, because you asked a question, are we setting up our small schools for success? Are you actually, was that rhetorical or are you expecting an answer at some point?
I think if we are truly looking at a, a plan moving forward here and to execute over the next two years, absolutely, it's a real question.
Okay. I just wanted to then make sure that that's understood.
Absolutely.
And then I just wanted to also say that I agree with you over the last two years that there's been a change in the site leadership going to instructional leaders. And that was a goal so that we could achieve greater student outcomes. So having this conversation doesn't negate what's been done. And what I said in the past had nothing to do with that strategy. Saying that, because you mentioned it, got me a little worried and concerned because it sounded like possibly community members or maybe schools could also then think that, as it was mentioned, if they're not on this list, they can kind of sit back. I, I think that this school district, looking at how many students we are capable of educating, that they are all in a growth mode, that they all would be looking to be intentional, given that we have this new vision, new mission, new core values, especially with being growth-minded, that no one would be sitting back. So besides getting these plans, the, we would be getting strategic plans from all of our schools going forward. Because as we know, since we are a choice state, at any time, that can change, especially if we have any growth in our charter schools, even though it's not anticipated right now, but if we did. So I also think that part of that mission is because we do want to add the rigor, because we've heard our communities say, that's why they're leaving. They're going to other programs because they provide that. So we need to make sure that we are providing at all of our schools what our, our changing community, because this 21st century is changing very rapidly, what they're wanting. So I just wanted to make that point also.
Agreed very much. Board Member Privates.
Thank you. Dr. Krieger, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Have you spoken with all of the principals on that, on the elementary schools to make sure that they're all in, in terms of working to grow their, their, their school enrollment and are willing to take on that responsibility?
You mean this four or all 19?
The four.
The four have all been spoken.
What I'll call the Tier One Code Red Schools and the Tier Two.
Yes, they, yes, they have all been, had the discussion.
Okay. And what happens if one year from now, some of our Code Red Schools have not increased in district enrollment by 10%? What then? Because you have, you know, increased enrollment year one, increased by 10%, year two, reach a minimum of 400.
There are a couple of contingencies that I, that I would see. One is what I had already mentioned about Yavapai and HOOCOM, if that makes sense. The other schools, we would have to look at that one by one to see, is there a trend? Is it, is it a flat line or is it an upward trend? Now, we set 10%, understanding, and, and that was really, it was, it was a subjective 10% enrollment first year because we didn't want to make it unreachable and yet we wanted to show an upward trend. And a percentage rather than a, a flat number. A flat number would be unfair to, to the lower enrollment schools. So we set 10% as a way to say, can we check the trend? And are, and are you online? Yes. That does mean that a school like Yavapai would have a huge goal for the second year if they only made 10%. We, we understand that. But as we know from many years of experience, first year of initiatives, it takes a while to get going and you usually have an, you start a new program, you have an implementation dip that you have to work through and start back up. So understanding those things, it's kind of why we set that a little bit lower than, than what we originally thought, trying to be fair to the schools. But I think if they, if they don't make it, if all of a sudden their academics drop and their enrollment is, is flat, then I think we call Code Red again at that point. I don't believe that that will happen with support. I believe there's a certain amount of the, the effective, the Hawthorne effect of giving attention and, and then seeing an increase because of the intention that we're given. And that's why I'm saying two years is because we want more than just the initial, oh, yay, we're, we've got something new. We want them to get into the grind of day-to-day, having to be more rigorous and stick with the plan. And, and to do it too short, I, I think would not allow us to see if they're willing to persevere and be persistent. Being too long might create a sense of they're not really serious about it.
Well, there's no urgency if you give too much time.
Board Member Kirby.
Okay. Board Member Beckham, do you remember the continuous improvement plans? So that was just last year. That was, Dr. Krieger wasn't here for that, but there are many staff people in the room today and most of the principals. So we started that strategy of how you're going to, we didn't say grow in enrollment, but it is how you're going to enhance your product a couple of years ago. So I, I hesitate to ask all of our schools to go through that exercise.
No, they are.
Well, but it's been meaningless, I'm sorry, Dr. Krieger. I hesitate to ask them to do it because it has been meaningless. It's not changed a thing. So either we figure out how to make them meaningful or we just don't waste our staff members' time to do it. So that's just my two cents on that. With, and I'll let you respond, because you'll probably want to respond to this next one too. With respect to what do we do, I think you said, Board Member Privates, what do we do if the in, in district enrollment hasn't? Okay, it doesn't say in district on this proposal. And I know you firmly believe in that and we need to have that conversation, but I'm going to put out there, I'm of the opinion at this point, we let staff figure out how they want to do it. And if they want to take the, if they want to, in my opinion, would be a very short-sighted approach to go for out-of-district kids, then let's let them do it. That's just my opinion. And then lastly, Dr. Krieger, the question of what happens if they don't increase by 10% in the first year? I felt that it was kind of squishy. I mean, it felt a little squishy the way you responded to it. So I'd like to have by school, a specific, like a page, doesn't have to be complicated, a page for each school, what are the goals? And then what are those specific contingencies so that it's documented, it's not squishy, and they can take it, the principals can take it, they can give one, a sheet to every single parent in their community, they can hang it on doors of their boundary if they want to. Something that's very, very clear that nobody can hide behind, well, I didn't really understand. Because, and then my last point, this is great and I'm glad we're finally here, but here's the reality. New superintendent, maybe, new board, so what does this all mean a year from now? Does it get just lost and forgotten like the continuous improvement plans did? Because you have a new superintendent who wants to come in and do their thing and, oh, just give me two more years? That, that's my question is, this is, we, it's, we kicked the can down the road for a decade. And I really appreciate Dr. Krieger's lens on this, I appreciate his approach. I am willing to give Dr. Krieger the chance. But I have quite a bit of skepticism, quite a bit. I share Board Member Pearlberg's skepticism.
Right. For good reason, I, I know. The continuous improvement plans are, are still in effect and Dr. Sakos, Dr. Hoggigot, Dr. Nance and his staff have been working with, with the principals this year to remodel those so that they are meaningful. They, for example, in the Coronado complex, they are an important part of that feeder system of making sure that, that all of the feeder schools have elements in their continuous improvement plan that are unified in that learning community that they are working toward leading into. So they're, those, I believe you will see difference. And again, new product, new people coming in, looking at it with, with new lenses and, and sometimes it just takes time, year after year, to say, yes, we're still doing that, yes, we're still doing that, and you keep, you keep at it. So that, that is happening. So I just wanted to let you know that I, I appreciate your support and yes, when new, when new administrations come in, there are certain things that, that they do and they bring different experiences, different successes, I hope a great deal of successes. So it's important that the superintendent and the board work together. The board being clear on what their expectations are, and this is one, I believe, from the three members who will be here after January 1, that, that this is very important to them and, and the legacy of the two of you that are leaving is, is very important on, on this issue. We're talking about this issue. It's very important that, that everybody understands this is a district move. It is, it's, it's been you as board members and, and we as administrators agree that, that we need to help these schools. And to abandon that after, after a couple of months would be unfair to the schools and the students in those schools. But I think that board member, superintendent relationship will be very key in the transition.
Thank you for that. So how, and putting you on the spot a bit here, but you're okay with me doing that.
So what's new?
So how do we transition this initiative between the two boards?
After tomorrow, I assume we will know for sure who those people are. And I will be contacting them to get them enrolled in certain board member trainings and part of that is orientation to the school district that, that cabinet members and I will, will do with them. That doesn't mean, here's the map, this is where our schools are. That really means this is what we're about. This is where we as a cabinet, in conjunction with the board, have been about. Then we also need in January, and I have actually set a date with Michael Lorsch to come in and meet with the new board. So there's consistency both in the presentation and where we're going. So that has been set for January 22nd. So all of those, those pieces have to be, use the word intentional, we have to know what we're doing and why we're doing it and be consistent. The, the biggest downfall in successful plans for schools comes as a result of instability in my mind and a lack of persistence. We, we choose a direction and a path that we know is good for kids and will make schools stronger and we have to stick with that. There are probably many paths one could go on to, to improve the school district. You choose one, the best one at the time that you have, but then you stick with it. And the administration has to have that resolve as well as the continuing board members, that resolve. And we work together to make sure that the transition goes smoothly. When a new superintendent is, is chosen, I hope that that person would welcome a conversation with me so that we, we can talk about those same issues that the new board members will talk about. So, and then the new superintendent and the new board, there are transition trainings that are offered as well for them to come to see eye to eye on these issues.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Hartman.
Thank you for the answer, Dr. Krieger. I think it's a terrific answer. And it is all about persistence, intentionality, and just continuing through. These things don't happen overnight, but consistency. At the leadership level, multiple leadership level, board, administration, site leadership, it's all important. It's great. I just had a comment on our Code Red Schools as they've been named. Once again, I, I do, I do, I also want to agree that I think looking at every school does make a lot of sense, but there really is probably a, you know, everyone can focus on it, but then there's an effort on kind of the Tier One or Phase One, Phase Two with some thought as to why they fit on that list because there's also a bandwidth capacity of administration. And so probably dealing with building two schools and managing four kind of academic performance enhancement programs is probably about, I'm guessing, is starting to stretch the bandwidth. So we just need to make sure we set everybody up for success in this process. The other thing I was just going to add on those four schools is that, once again, in the spirit of empowering people with data, that original work that Applied Economics did, Mr. Braumer did, with the census tract data, actually identified the potential population for each of those schools. I know it would take a little bit of extra effort, but back to not a shotgun approach, but a rifle approach, maybe looking at the census tracts, just confirming it for those four schools. Because, for example, the data, the census tract, and I know it needs to be trued up, looked like there was over a thousand students in population for Navajo, Anasazi.
That's a K8 population as well.
Yeah, so it needs to be narrowed down, but you kind of need to know what, you have to begin with the end in mind. So if there's 600 students out there or there's a thousand students out there, what is it roughly? And to the extent, some of the resources we talked about is mailings to families, we need to know all of those addresses, you know, within that area, because we don't want to just mail the people that are already going to our schools. We want to mail to the other neighborhood kids who aren't going to our schools and saying, hey, look at us, this is what we're doing. So there may be some funding necessary to just make sure we get the data points right and we get kind of the target audience we're going after, right, sooner than later, because that may be a good use of funds in terms of strategically focusing on, you know, which are opportunity families and the communities. Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Hi. Thank you. And Board Member Mara, I kind of want to jump in on what you were saying, because I think it's pretty much the same thing I was trying to say earlier too, is setting these, these schools up for success, that, that we really want to, you know, see grow, see, see them sustainable, see them healthy and see them serving our students to the best of their ability. We have to ask ourselves, what is realistic and what is just that which we have to let go of in order for all these students and their teachers and, and their leaders to be successful? So I, so I guess I'm going to highlight it again. As we look at those critical schools and certainly any schools that, you know, we, we know are on a rebuild lesson, we have to, to be able to defend to our community why we're rebuilding them, it's incumbent to the staff at that school, to leadership, district leadership, to actually ask the question, to grow or to consolidate? Because maybe it is in the best interest of a group of students to actually be consolidating a larger school, that they might have more opportunities, that they might have a, a better learning environment. If we don't ask that now and just instead kind of question, do we get, hold on to this building, again, we're losing that focus that we've all valued, what is in the best interest of our student and what's a student-focused decision. So I would add that. Any additional questions and/or comments from anyone, staff included?
Board Member Kirby.
So great conversation. To try to bring it home for myself, I guess I would ask, Dr. Krieger, what is, what is the deliverable? What, what do we, this has been a really healthy conversation, a difficult one, but where do, what's the next step? To provide, to provide the clarity and for future boards, future superintendents, future principals even.
principals even, potentially, at the schools, what's the next step?
The next step is to identify that program, if, if we get a motion to accept this process, to, to identify those programs at, at the school, to, I like the idea of a single sheet, whatever, here it is, this laid out, this is what they're going to do, and, and it's specific to the program that, that they are adopting, to some degree, it's specific to the school.
Okay.
And that, and then, and, and each one of those schools make a presentation to the board, to say, this is where we're going with their plan, long-term plan. Then the deliverable is, at the one-year mark, where are they? What have they, what have they done? What, what changes to their plan, what, what adaptations to the plan? And then the, then the two-year of, they've either reached the 400 student enrollment, plus maintained their academic growth, grown or, or maintained, and, and, or they are consolidated.
Can we, okay, with all of that, can we not hold up this, the plan by school while we wait on the conversation of what each school is going to do? So by that, I mean, you know, Yavapai and Sequoia on this list are going to have, they're, one's a tier one, one's tier two. They're going to have different targeted growth objectives. And these aren't complicated, I mean, they're, I think what you're saying here is it's basically an academic objective and an enrollment objective, period. Can we go ahead and get those solidified and memorialized by school with clarity? Is it include preschool, does it not include preschool, whatever? Is it gonna, going to be AZ Merit, is it not going to be AZ Merit? And let's get that part done, and in place, and then, and, and formalized. Not a presentation, but almost a, a resolution, a resolution from this board, that these are the schools that we have asked staff to go focus on. And then, the rest of it, you can have the principals do their presentations, and you can take your time to do it right. Is that something we could look for?
Absolutely. Are you, are you suggesting that you not take a vote tonight, when we get started?
Um, well, I, I don't, I'm not a big fan of taking a vote in a work study, particularly when no one's had an opportunity to comment on something this big, some of the little stuff, it's not that, but this one's pretty big. I support the process, and you could probably get the guidance, you know, you could, you could read the board. I would take a vote as early as the next meeting, as long as there's opportunity for public comment, but I'd also like to personally take it one step further, and have these growth targets by school memorialized, each single school, this is what we mean, this is what we're doing. And take a vote on that, too, in the form of a resolution.
For the, I, I don't think it's fair to ask staff to put that together by Thursday study session. Are you suggesting then Tuesday, the 13th, at the regular meeting?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Especially because we don't have public comment at Thursday.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't.
That's right.
We wouldn't, but, yeah. But let, let me kind of, I mean, before I jump to our other board members, me try to understand, because when you talk about an action item tonight, like, I'm struggling to understand what that would be specifically, other than kind of move forward with the plan, but I think in our discussion tonight, we've also raised some questions of, you know, what this plan really needs to accomplish. And, and again, I, I, I feel it is incumbent that administration, staff, site leadership ask itself, are, are we going to try and grow, or is it in our best interest to consolidate? And maybe that's what we at some point need to vote on, is, I mean, I guess that's what I'm trying to-
Can I jump?
-to wrap it up.
Sure. Okay. So I, I see the one sheet per school of, here are the objectives, almost as the action item to approve the process. That approves that, yes, we agree with this process, because we're putting very specific targets behind each, every single school. Then the plan that you're looking for might be an elementary, I don't know if it's an IB program, it might be, you know, STEM at Navajo enhancement, it might be consolidation at another school, it might be, you know, XYZ at a different school. That I would give staff plenty of time, because the clock starts ticking as soon as we approve the resolution. So hopefully, they don't take a lot of time, right?
Right.
I would give them time to figure out what that means. And then that then comes back in the form of either the budget, or maybe a consolidation approval, whatever that, whatever that looks like.
Can I, can I add to that?
Board Member Hartman, yes.
Yeah, I was just trying to connect the dots, because that one-page plan, trying to connect it to the earlier conversations. So for me, there's, there's four areas, two of which Board Member Kirby already covered. So there's your academic targets, there's your enrollment targets, there's your product enhancement plan, and there's your marketing plan.
Yeah, I got it.
All with kind of current state, this is what it is today, then year one, year two. So you could see, for an Anasazi, the academic performance that we already know, their AZ Merit is 85 and 86%, respectively, between ELA and math. So that's current state. Where do they want to be down the road? That's a pretty good starting place, actually. So theirs may not move all that much. But then you have enrollment targets, and so we know that their current state is whatever that number is up there for Anasazi, and where do they want to be year one, year two. Product enhancement plan, they're gonna be able to speak to the IB program, where Yavapai might not have an answer yet, but it's a, you know, at least a to-be-determined, will be determined by X, so at least we can agree to what that looks like. And then a marketing plan, because what I really think is gonna be interesting is I think schools are gonna start to learn from each other, and it doesn't have to be this, I mean, really, I would put it on one page, and then the detail is behind it, but at least it starts to show, okay, school one versus school two versus school three, how thoughtful is it, how complete, right? And, and from a resolution standpoint, at least we can agree to the framework, and we can certainly agree to the current state, and use that as kind of the benchmark going forward. Does that, is that kind of what you're thinking as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so I see almost a two-phased approach. The first is the current state, it's the academics, the enrollment. And I don't necessarily disagree with what you've put here, we don't have the tier-two targets, but you'll figure that out, I'm sure, and we can go ahead and approve that. Then the, the, the rest of the plan, your, it's number three and four on your list, might be, we might, it comes, it comes in waves. You might have one school like Anasazi that's ahead of it, they know what they want, the next school might come two weeks later, that's, that's phase two of the plan. The other piece that I would like to see on the resolution is your contingencies. If a school does not make their enrollment target by year one, if it's a tier-one school, and they don't make their enrollment target of increase by 10% in year one, then what does that mean? Because if we don't have the consequence, there will be no accountability through this whole process.
Mm-hmm.
Board Member Beckham.
Well, I can say I would not be ready to do any votes today, because I really do want to understand all of what has just been said, because I got a little bit confused. I think I know the direction, but what I want to do is make sure that it's on paper, so that we can all be on the same page going forward. I, when I hit my light, I was, an idea came in my head, and it was going back to, this board is not to approve the minutia of everything. And so, it may be, maybe, I'm saying maybe, that after the discussion that you have with the site leadership and with your administration, that you determine, you know, what we really need to do is not come and communicate it to the board, it's, we go out to the community when you do the communication to the community. And that's where we understand, we might get the, you know, the written information to give us an idea of what's going on prior to, but we're not making a hard and fast decision on all the work, as you said, that's been done at the site level, involving the parents, involving all the staff that would be involved in decisions like this, and also the budgetary side to it. That would be all encompassing, that could be presented then, and that was-
Yeah. Completely agree. Because- Board Member Kirby.
Completely agree, because our board meetings historically have been used as marketing meetings. They've been used as dog and pony shows of, here's the program of the day, and it's told to us, and then it, that's where it ends. It, it never gets disseminated to the Rotary Clubs, or to the, you know, the women's clubs, or to, to the, well, even to the parents, but we need to talk to others besides our own parents, if the objective here is to grow the enrollment. And it, it won't happen in a tweet, it's going to take some very deliberate and intentional taking whatever Anasazi's going to do, and getting it out to those decision-makers, the families, the parents, who aren't our children, they aren't, they aren't parents of our children. Because otherwise, we're just in an echo chamber.
And I'm gonna add to, add to the work the next few weeks, staying that little, do a little positive and a little negative here. I do believe we did have some CIPs, Continuous Improvement Plans, that were very meaningful, with a huge sense of urgency, and maybe pushed quite hard. So, and then we had some that weren't, totally agree with that. My question moving forward is, how are we going to put into this plan the ability to support our principals and leadership and administration that are helping their teams push significant change at their campuses? How are we gonna support them when they hit a wall of resistance? A wall that we've seen develop into, I'll put it mildly, a lot of unpleasantness. And so, if we want to talk about how are we gonna be successful at this, if we, if, if we as a district, well, it is a bit of our problem, because we get the public comments and the angry emails. Our question will be, as a board, is how can we together support administration, staff, and site leadership in, in those changes that are meaningful, those CIPs that are meaningful, and, and not let our, our leaders just get pushed out because change is unpleasant? I'm gonna just say it, and I'm sure there's gonna be lots of blogs about that, but oh well. Board Member Kirby?
Again, it's, in my opinion, that's not our problem anymore. And change doesn't have to necessarily be unpleasant. It will be up to Dr. Krieger, I mean, you're care, you're doing all the heavy lifting. And I appreciate for, appreciate you bringing this proposal, you brought it to us. I think you would say this was not imposed upon you by any board member.
Absolutely correct.
So, it is, it's, you're carrying a lot of the future of this district on your shoulders. And I hope the community recognizes that. But it really, it, we can't, as a board, continue to try to solve world hunger in Scottsdale School District. We really have to just step back, turn it over to the leader. That's why the plans become very important with consequences, because if he, or she, or whoever it is in the future says, eh, I'm not gonna worry about it, well, then we haven't memorialized that there was a consequence to the, to the decision that that person made to not worry about it. Because we can't have 12 schools that are under 500, and two years from now have 12 schools that are under 300. That is unsustainable. And that is doing a disservice to the community, so.
Yeah. I agree, I don't feel I'm disagreeing with that at all. It is a lot of pressure that's been placed on our leadership, and, and I do want to make sure that we, as board, and as a community overall, are ready to support that leadership, even if mistakes are made, even if there's personalities to deal with. We have to try and set you all up for success. And, and I too want to stress how incredibly grateful I am, and have been, that you're here in our district. I thank our leadership team for all that they've gone through, and all the work that they have done in this district. You're just all really not appreciated enough.
Well, thank you, thank you, all of you, I, I appreciate those comments, and it's, it's why you hire us. And I think that's, that's, that's an important point to be made. The board hires a superintendent, has a voice in hiring the staff, they work directly for me, I work directly for you, you, you give us policy decisions, this is a policy decision, you want us to develop, and I appreciate Board Member Kirby's confidence in us, that puts a certain amount of accountability on us, but none of us would have gone into these roles without willingly accepting that accountability. I will tell you, as a group, we are here to improve Scottsdale Unified School District in line with your vision, we found that out earlier this year, we are, we are in alignment, while at the same time, and, and most importantly, improving the district improves the day-to-day life in the schools for the kids. We, we have to have plans that will improve the education, and more importantly, I guess, the long-term opportunities for these kids through what they learn. And those are, in a district this large and diverse, those are differentiated goals and programs. And we accept that. And, and I thank you for your support.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, thank you for ending on such a positive and hopeful note. I'm getting there, the caboose is getting a little farther along. And, and I do thank you all for this conversation, and just for all the work that has gone into getting us here. So do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Board Member Kirby, a second?
Second.
Board Member, thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. We'll be home early.
[laughing]